Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Sioux Falls City Council Fiscal Committee meeting of Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the Tuesday, July 3rd, 2018 meeting. I know that was a while ago, wasn't it? By the time we're done, I'd entertain that motion at this point.
So moved. Erickson.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson, second by Counselor Sale. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion pass.
Provide you with a lot more information and detail with respect to how we comprehensively address grants across the city and then within some of the departments that receive larger grant funds. But one of the things that I wanted to share was that over the course of the last couple of weeks and even months as we've put together this presentation, I've had an opportunity to gain a much better understanding from all of our departments, the amount of time that goes into identifying grants, managing grants, making sure that we are in compliance with all of the grants that we already receive. And I'm happy to report, as you will hear from our finance team as they go through some of the commonalities associated with our grant process, that we secure over $11 million in grants, or we have secured over $11 million in grants this year alone, which I think is a testament to the team members that we have on staff across the city within each of our departments that put a lot of effort into this process. So with that, I'm going to introduce Tim Konda from the Finance Department, and he's going to talk through a couple of slides here with respect to the Finance Office and their involvement in the grant process, especially as it goes to reporting that and those funds to the council. Thank you.
There, I'll get the microphone. I can do the welcome officially on the record. So, welcome, and thank you for being here this afternoon.
Thank you. Tim Konda with the City Finance Department, and here to talk a little about the grant process. And really, the experts are kind of behind me as far as when we work with those teams to, you know, find these opportunities and administer these grants. And you'll get to hear from them here in a little bit. So with that said, let's get going. I think one of the first things we need to talk about or understand is that grants versus contributions. The city receives both. They're both important, but really that grant piece is really understanding the, you know, what really determines what is a grant to us. And that really goes back to two key factors. And the first key factor is really identifying that the source, the original source, is federal dollars. And that's what determines that that really, truly is a grant to us versus a contribution where, you know, we're just getting money from an organization, and we know there's no federal dollars tied to it. Even if we get money from an organization, a third-party organization, and there's dollars from a federal grant tied to it, that's still a grant to us. And we have to then talk about the second part of the grant, which is that compliance requirement. And I think that's really important as well as, once we introduce ourselves to a grant, we have to comply with those regulations. And I think that's really where the work really begins for us. And we'll talk a little bit about that here in a little bit. So I think this slide here, the grant process, is really telling about how collaborative this process really is. The entire grant process involves much more than applying and receiving grant funding. That first piece of applying for the grant and defining the grant, I think the important piece in that box really is about evaluating the grant and understanding that what is the impact to us after we receive the grant? Because before we apply for this grant, we need to understand from all the departments involved, from finance departments, maybe HR, if there's personnel involved, just how are we going to administer those grants? As you can see, the administration part is really the bigger piece of the grant process, you know, that we have to follow the procurement laws, we have to do the financial tracking, you have to monitor the project as well, and then you have the financial audit and continually evaluation. So I think that, you know, this really is a telling slide of, you know, application and administration, and then, you know, ensuring that we do comply with all these requirements for, to make sure that we have future funding, that we don't jeopardize that future funding on grant opportunities. The next slide, you know, talking about identifying grant opportunities. The city, one thing I enjoy about the city is it really is unique in that we have many different businesses within the city. And, you know, we're fortunate that we have great teams within those departments and those businesses to help us administer these grants. And they're really the experts when it comes to these grants and really understanding the compliance and the rules and, you know, just applying for these and finding those opportunities. I think that every department looks for different ways to source funding, whether they're contributions or whether they're grants, to support their missions and their goals to provide services to the public. So these departments continually identify using internal resources, they use external resources as well, you know, whatever they can to identify these opportunities is, you know, that's what they do, and they do a really good job with it. So, but I think the important piece here is, again, they're really the experts in their field of business. And from finance, we're really collaborating with them to help them comply with those requirements. So to understand the cost-benefit of each grant, the city must review each of these kind of functional areas. Administering the grants is complex and does require significant resources. You know, that collaborative approach of understanding what the project restrictions are, what those procurement restrictions are, you know, then the financial compliance, and then there's continued compliance as things change, and then the programming and reporting requirements. So all throughout those different steps, there's multiple collaboration and communication happening with the departments and the parties and the team members involved to ensure that we meet these compliance requirements. There is, there really is no substitute for that collaboration and communication. I mean, I think the last thing we want to do as a city and as an organization is to introduce risk for future funding. And so we really do make sure that we understand and evaluate what the risk is and what we have to do to comply with these grants before we actually send that application off. In 2017, the city did receive around, well, we spent around $11.5 million worth of expenditures. That's a pretty good, I think, a pretty good average. I think it would be right around there for 2018 as well. And as you can see, there's, you know, about 84% or 82% or 9.4 million of this is related to transit, health, and housing. And then about 15% or 1.8 million helps support police and highways and streets. The other 3% supports fire, planning, environmental, and then human relations. I think it's important to understand that grants are an important part of the city's business model. You know, we look at taxes, you look at permits, you look at charges for services, and grants and contributions are an important part of the business model as well. In summary, you know, this process continually evolves. Opportunities are being captured with our grant funding. You know, every opportunity, though, has to have that thoughtful evaluation of can we administer this and can we meet compliance regulations when it comes to those grants? And then there is, there is no substitute for that continual collaboration between the teams to ensure that compliance, to reduce that risk of future funding. With that said, I'm going to turn it over now to the, and let the department experts kind of speak through their grants and what the grants mean to them, and go from there. All right?
Good evening. I'm Amy Richardson from the Health Department. I'm the Finance and Information Officer there. So I'm going to talk to you about our health grants. And the majority of the grants that we do receive support the operations of Falls Community Health. And Falls Community Health offers primary medical care, dental care, and behavioral health within our community. 80% of the patients that are served by Falls Community Health actually live within the zip code around Falls Community Health. So the main grant that we receive is actually a Community Health Center grant, and this is to serve the uninsured, underserved, and those enrolled in Medicaid. So, for example, in 2017, 79% of the patients served by us, or about 10,000 patients, were actually reported as uninsured or on Medicaid. This grant also does require us to maximize revenue on the other side, so we also do serve Medicare, insurance, and then, of course, Medicaid. And that leverages about $3.4 million in additional revenue beyond the grant. We also have special population grants that support HIV care and prevention. We have Orion White in HIV prevention through the state of South Dakota, colorectal cancer screenings, family planning services, refugee screenings, and health services. So all of these are incorporated into our health grants. So when we are looking for new funding opportunities, we're always evaluating how does it fit with our board-approved strategic plan? Is it sustainable financially? Are we going to be able to sustain it if the grant ends? Will we be able to have the personnel or the service to the patients at Falls Community Health? And then there's a lot of grant compliance pieces. And one example of this for us at the Health Department would be access or access to care. So how many more patients are we going to serve? How many more visits are we going to see? So that would be an example of grant compliance. The majority of these funding opportunities do come to us through the community health network. So we have a large network. These are pushed out to us for applications. And then we also are connected with the South Dakota Department of Health, so we get funding opportunities through them. So all of these grants that we have have their own set of terms and conditions, each which require monthly and annual reporting as well as, like, retention of documents. So this is the part that's administratively heavy, like Tim talked about. And this is where we have that collaborative approach with the Finance Department. So we have the reporting and the purchasing and all of those components. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to another department.
Good evening. Shannon Austin with the Public Works Office. I am talking today about the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which the city of Sioux Falls became an MPO back in the late 1970s. Basically, communities across the nation that were 50,000 people or more had the ability to use federal dollars to plan for transportation in their area. So the city of Sioux Falls has been very fortunate to receive, currently now, we receive close to $900,000 in Metropolitan Planning Organization funds. It comes directly from the federal government, passes through to the DOT, and then it is a fund that we use for transportation planning for the surrounding area. We plan transportation with the urbanized areas of Sioux Falls, which includes the city of Crooks on the north, the city of Hartford, the city of Tee, Harrisburg, and the city of Brandon. So, and that also includes Minnehaw County as well as Lincoln County, and the Department of Transportation and Federal Highway Administration. So we receive funds annually. And our match, we have an 18.05% match from the DOT. 81% is direct federal funded. The restrictions with this money is that it is only used for transportation planning. We can't construct anything with those funds. It's just a plan for transportation in and around the city of Sioux Falls, which is a little unique. But as with a lot of our grants, there is, there always are stipulations that go with those federal dollars. So the majority of our time, or the majority of this funding, is spent on staff time. We have about a dozen to about 15 staff in GIS, in engineering, and also in planning, that submit time sheets to do transportation planning. For instance, right now, we're working on the Interstate 229 and Minnesota Avenue interchange. We're doing a study, doing an environmental documentation to prepare for construction and final design. Those funds are eligible to be submitted for reimbursement from the Department of Transportation. So until we get into that final design, those funds are a different set of funds, but anything planning-wise is eligible. We also have, again, using Interstate 229 and Minnesota Avenue as an example, we've hired a consultant to do the work. The consultant, we can hire the consultant through the city and submit for reimbursements through the DOT to actually do the planning. So consultant time is also eligible for transportation planning funds. We provide annual reports. We do the monthly reporting and the yearly reporting. And at the end of every year, I'm always happy to say we spend every dime. So it's always a success. We all have other opportunities also for other grants that we search with our federal highway partners as well as Department of Transportation. They send emails to us and notify us when there are other grants, where there are other grant opportunities through the Department of Transportation or nationwide. So we're always very actively seeking other ways to help fund construction and/or other special, unique projects. So we certainly keep up on the opportunities there. And I think that is all I have.
Good evening. Al Rutger with the Housing Division. We receive two main federal grants every year, the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnerships Program Grants, that currently we're using entirely for housing and homeless, homeless prevention programs. The Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program, we got $973,000 in 2018, and in the home program, we got $506,000. Those amounts are derived by federal formula based on a lot of census stats of, such as population, age of housing, condition of housing, things like that. So those two grants account for approximately 60% of the new money we get every year. We also have, you know, some city general funds. We also have, I should back up and say, a lot of the money we provide through the CDBG and home program is for loans that go out to homeowners or developers in the community. So a lot of our funding comes from repayment of old grant funds we've put out there. As far as new opportunities, a lot of it comes down to our staff time. Right now, we have about six people that carry out the CDBG and home program. So to pursue a new opportunity would depend on how similar is it to what we're already doing, how much time is going to be added administrative-wise to carry out those grants. And then periodic grants that, you know, might get funded one year and not the next. And it's, again, it's a staffing issue of, if you got a large grant, you may hire somebody to help administer that grant. And then if the money goes away, then, so there's going to be staffing issues. We have gotten a couple somewhat large grants in the last 10 years or so, one from the Federal Home Loan Bank, one from another large bank here in town. Those were very similar in mission to what we were already doing, and we thought we could capture those dollars without a whole lot of extra administrative work or setting up new systems to track and comply with those grant requirements. So that's all I have for you.
Good evening. Laura McManus, Police Department. In the PD, we have several grants that we utilize, and I think the COPS grant is probably the one that people are most familiar with. We've gotten the COPS grant in '14, '15, '16, and '17, and those grants allow for us to hire additional officers. And in partnering with the grant, the city pays a percentage of the officer's salary and benefits for the life of the grant, which is three years. And as that grant moves forward and matures, the city's percentage increases until we finally take it over once the grant is done. For 2018, we received a grant for three officers. Unfortunately, for 2019, the grant for this year has not been opened up yet. There's some legal wranglings going on, so we haven't been able to apply for any options for '19 yet. For 2019, we are sub-grantee for the state of South Dakota's COPS Anti-Ampetamine Program Grant, and that was applied for by the DCI out of Pierre. And that will allow for us to add one additional investigator to our narcotics section to focus on the methamphetamine crimes and other drug-related crimes as well. We have a domestic violence grant to encourage arrests. That's been in place since 2008 and is also a grant that was started by the DCI at that time. And that funds one investigator who his sole job is to work with domestic violence victims, to provide them some safety plans and some services, and also it accounts for offender accountability as well to make sure that offenders are being held accountable for their actions. We have an Office of Highway Safety Grant that kind of vacillates from year to year. On average, we get about $100,000 a year, and that grant money is used specifically to hire back officers who are off-duty, to work in overtime capacities, to focus specifically on be DUI saturation or maybe seatbelt enforcement or other traffic enforcement-type offenses that they're looking for. The JAG and the Homeland Security Grants we have are focused primarily on equipment, and that's how we've been able to just recently receive a new bomb robot. We were able to outfit our mobile field force team with the equipment that they need to fulfill their tasks. And then we also have had some radios that were purchased that the officers use on the street. And like all the other departments, we look for a lot of different resources for grants. We look at industry periodicals. We look at current grant funding resources and where we're getting grants from, and do they have anything new that's coming out? We certainly partner with other agencies as well to find out what they're doing and how we can maybe tap into any grants that they may have found. And of course, as we look for grants, it's a pretty basic process for us from the standpoint of, you know, does a grant seem like it's something that we can utilize? Does it fit? Can we meet the requirements of the grant? And can we fulfill the compliance as we move forward with it? So, thank you.
Actually, before you step away, we will wait for questions. But I was instructed when I left the house this morning to lobby for a name for the new robot.
Oh.
But I'll get to you after the meeting by the time.
Yep.
Because otherwise, my kids, can we put our checkmark in of what our choice of the three are? So.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll see you afterwards.
Absolutely.
Sam Trubelcock, City Planning. The transit grants, there's really only three that we utilize on an annual basis. But certainly, the first one, the operating grant, what they call F Federal Transit Administration 5307 Grant, is the big one. It's the one that we receive every year. This year, it was about $2.6 million. Last year was about $2.7. It funds about a third of transit's operating budget, so certainly, it's an important piece of the transit service for Suriya Metro, for the fixed route service, and also for the paratransit service. Certainly, there's a lot of requirements with that, but that kind of falls with some, a lot of the FTA grants, and I'll talk about that in a minute. The capital grant, which is an FTA 5339 grant, if you get into the numbering scheme here, but that's about $300,000 that we receive this year. That grant will tend to bank that for capital purchases. It's not very usual because, and we talked about the low numbers of, that we receive in capital funding to help replace our bus system. And this is that capital grant we use. So we'll bank it for one year, and we'll probably do it for two, three, four years until we're ready to purchase some fixed route buses. And that tends to be what we're using it for right now, is for the fixed route bus replacements. The paratransit buses, we're spending with local funds usually, just because it's a lot of ways easier through the procurement standards to purchase those with local funds. State matching grant is the small one, but it's certainly still, annually, we receive it. It's $62,000. And the state provides that. The reason it's called the matching grant is it's matching that operating grant, so they provide that to us. They provide it to every transit system in the state. We actually get the most out of any transit system in the state. Then Rapid City gets similar amounts. But we receive that every year. There's some other grants, too, that we do look at and, in some cases, utilize. And as everybody's talked about, that's kind of a cost-benefit that we have to look at, whether or not it's really worthwhile to apply for it and receive the funding for it. The last and most recent one is a competitive grant. It's the capital grant for, what would they call it? They call the 5339B Program. So we applied for that for the downtown depot renovation, and we received $1.1 million for that. And that certainly helped a great deal in finishing that project. So when we looked at the cost-benefit, it made a lot of sense. Now, we know that probably increased the cost of that project 10% or so. But we received well over half the amount to finish it. Now, if we only received maybe $200,000, you'd go, well, maybe it's not such a good idea to take. So those are the kinds of things that we need to be thinking about when we're looking at those grants, whether or not they're worthwhile to look at. You know, some other possible grant funding, we have in the past utilized a past rendition of the 5310 Grant Program for other services. But what we use it for now isn't direct service. Actually, this program goes typically to nonprofits. All those cities can apply for the funding. Nonprofits can utilize it for, let's say, Lifescape or Decodabilities wants to apply for a bus, for their own transit, their own transit service. They'll do that. Lifescape does that quite often. But what we've been utilizing it for indirectly is CCTS River Cities receives operating funding, $90,000 a year. And they're using that for the agency rides instead of it being on paratransit. So that's been very helpful for us. But it doesn't come directly to us, but we do work with CCTS River Cities through that process there, and we could utilize it eventually, too. Now, FTA is other competitive research demonstration innovation grants. You see a lot of them. Some city might receive, you know, $300 million to start up a new system, like a streetcar system. Could we look at that? Yes, we could. But again, you have to look at what you're getting into. A lot of times, that's startup. It's buying buses or infrastructure. Well, when you do that, you have to replace that. Is that something that you can do? And that's something we look at very carefully before we get into it. So. The things that we need to look at compliance-wise, anytime any of the FTA money comes to the city, we need to do compliance on the entire system. So it's not just on that. So any of the operating grant, we have to do it for all operations. Compliance are like civil rights and procurement standards and drug alcohol oversight. Maintenance needs to be looked at and maintained to their standards. ADA, we have to do a paratransit system because we receive federal funds, and we have other ADA standards, and then, of course, things like equal employment. So there's a lot of compliance that you have to look at, and we have a lot of help. It isn't just me. There's a lot of other staff that are helping with that and people from Suriya Metro. So. That, next slide. Oh, questions?
If I could, I just wanted to add one additional comment here. We do have some additional team members in the audience, Colleen Moran from Human Relations and Jody Fick from Libraries. We didn't include a slide specifically for their departments because the bulk of the funding is housed in these other departments. However, if you have any questions for them, they also pursue grant opportunities as well as receive contributions throughout the community as well. Thank you.
All right. One of the things that I need to do ground-rule-wise, just so that we know where we're at, we have to probably be done with questions by around 6:30 and allow a few minutes for any public input that we would have, and have to be adjourned by 6:45, just as a way to kind of keep an eye on where we're at clockwise. Don't want to rush through. If we need to extend, we can certainly do that. So, did anyone have from the committee some questions? Counselor Erickson, please.
Thank you. Thank you. And thanks for all of your presentations. This information is super helpful. I'm looking at the slide with the 2017 grants by department, the pie chart on there, if you will. The total is $11.5 million. So my question is, is are any of these grants that we receive, are they over specific years? Is it, did you break it out just per year? Or, for example, like Officer McManus had mentioned, some of the COPS grants are for three consecutive three consecutive years and eventually fall off to our funding?
So the, Tim Condon with City Finance, the 11.5 are for actual expenses paid for within 2017. And so the grant funding could be like Sam was alluding, where it's banking some dollars from multiple years. You know, housing is a good example of that. They'll have dollars from a previous year to carry forward, and even the cops, the cops grants or some of the police grants do the same thing on their JAG and OHS. So yeah, it could be multiple years of funding.
Okay. And then I would be, since you're standing there, so maybe for you, how, what percentage of our grants are matching? I know oftentimes, I mean, grants aren't a blank check. It comes with accountability, rightfully so. It comes with you have to address this particular issue. So what would you say approximately, is it half that have to be matching, or is that really just case by case?
Really is case by case. I really don't have a good number for that. My honest opinion, I really don't know. I think it'd be low, but.
Yeah, that's okay. I just, because I saw it mentioned in a couple slides, and so I don't want to assume those were the only ones with that. And so thank you. I want to say thank you to everyone for your presentation. I know oftentimes grants come with many strings attached and long-term impacts, and so even researching grants take time that you may not even apply for. And so it sounds like you're being conservative and respectful and mindful of the dollars that go into it, making sure it's the right decision for the city. I obviously support grants and feel like they have a great impact in our community and encourage you to continue to look at that. And then the last statement I will make is I think Boomer will make a great addition to the Police Department.
Counselor Sale.
I have one question. Can you give me a long-term outlook on grants? It seems like federal and state grants are starting to dry up. So what can we look for in the future? $11.5 million this year? Where are we going to be in the future?
You know, yeah, really, I think every department looks at these grants, and they try to identify the risk every year and understand what the risk would be to us, city impact if these went away. And we, you know, we do the best we can to understand the risk and get out ahead of that. You know, we're constantly visiting with them to understand, like, what is the risk? You know, especially those cycles of, you know, when the budget for the federal government is going into play right now. In fact, we've got a perfect example of transit where we're kind of talking through that. And, you know, if the, if, you know, the federal government goes on shutdown, well, that can affect some of our drawdowns as well. So, I mean, we're constantly collaborating and trying to understand what that means. I don't have a specific plan in place as to if, you know, if some of these went away, what that would mean. I mean, we'd have to take a look at what really is, what is our priorities and how can we fund those in a different way if it really means that we support this? So I don't know if that helps answer your question or not. Good.
Did you want to follow up with anything else? Counselor Nitzer?
Something we saw in our financial condition analysis yesterday presentation at our audit committee is just how small of a piece of pie grants make up of our entire budget. And one may say, well, then that means we're not getting enough, and we always should be looking for more. But what's really great about that is we're not exposed. We're not like other communities where if you were, had a huge percentage that you were counting on a particular grant, because those are out of your control. They go away and they drop a bomb on your budget, whereas it's a very small piece of the pie for us. So, you know, maybe in the specific project, it might cause a pinch, and you might have to figure things out, but there's really nowhere where we have a massive exposure where we're going to have a financial calamity if any of them go away. So that's a good thing for us to be positioned well. My question is, I assume besides the financial considerations, if a grant isn't followed of losing the funding, maybe there's some legal, I don't know if legal issues, if there's anything that comes up with that? Does the, is there oversight of the city attorney's office, making sure all of these are being followed to the letter of what it says, or is that really kind of handled by each department? I mean, is it, does the jeopardy go beyond just simply, you know, pay the money back? Or?
I think the jeopardy would be, I don't know that there'd be legal ramifications, but I think that the three things that comes to our mind first would be to that, A, your funding would potentially get reduced, and you'd be kind of like on a probation period, or B, the compliance standards and the auditing and the reporting would be increased at a level where now the administration really becomes very difficult, or yeah, you just lose that funding. I mean, I think the legal teams review every contract we enter with when it comes to, you know, using federal dollars and going through those procurement laws. I can't say that we'd be without legal risk, but I can't say that we would be with legal risk as well, so.
And if I could follow up, and maybe I missed this. If I did, I apologize. For each one of these grants, is there a specific person who's designated as quote-unquote "the administrator" who is looking at this to make sure that all the rules are being followed year to year? Like, for example, like Health Department has one person who does this grant and?
I think as a true designation, probably not like in terms of that's their permanent role, but yes, I mean, I could easily go out and contact those departments and say, this is who I need to talk to you about this grant.
Sure.
So there is a designation of who's administering these grants, who understands all the compliance rules and regulations, and that's part of their duty and their job.
And just, yeah, I was just getting at that if there was a particular person so that it's not, well, I thought he was doing it, no, you know, and that.
That's clearly defined in the roles of their jobs within their departments and their business models, so.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Don't give up the microphone until you at least get a plug in for your vote for the name. No, it's not Boomer.
I don't remember what the other two were.
Okay, I'll go with. Actually, Tim, if you could stay for just a minute.
I'll go with Boomer, I guess.
Because I'm going to follow up with a couple of questions as we keep moving. I tried to say, yeah, he said, he said it. He didn't vote for it. Tim, one of the things that I'm interested in, and I think it was during the police's slide, or the Police Department's slide, was talked a little bit about tracking that they track using MUNIS. Does that kind of follow for each department? Is that kind of something we should take a look at, that we can easily pull reports and kind of follow through the whole process?
So as you know, MUNIS was implemented back in 2014. So yeah, we're gradually implementing that grant module and the project module with the departments to try to help simplify and streamline those reporting requirements. And, you know, we started, we've got, Health does quite a bit of theirs on, within MUNIS, and in Police, we've started as well. Actually, affordable housing is utilizing MUNIS as well to help, so we're definitely making good strides in that direction to ease the burden of those administrations in reporting.
Thank you. And I wanted one more follow-up if I can ask Chief of Staff Beck a couple of questions, because I think, as we, first of all, thank you for putting this together. I know that's been a big part of your office of pulling this all together and really getting an idea of where we're at and how we go through this grant process and what we do apply for, what we don't, and tracking. And this presentation for me has been very helpful. I hope it, the exercise was good for you as well, for the office. I'm going to get in trouble how I do this. When you went through the entire process, were you able to identify anything that we were maybe missing or a better way of doing things? Or are there, like I said, are there the tools that maybe some of the departments met? I watched in between meetings, and it was fun to watch everyone kind of collaborate as we went in and bringing everyone into the room together at the same time as they were talking about their presentations as part of this grant writing exercise we've gone through. So I guess, are we missing the tools? Are there anything that really came to mind that could improve the process?
Well, it's interesting that you bring that up, Counselor Star, because when we got the group together, or when I called the meeting for this discussion to talk through the presentation and how we would potentially structure this, it was nice to have everyone in the same room, and that doesn't happen all the time. Because as you can imagine, if they're across departments and in separate buildings away from each other, you get, you know, very focused in on what you're doing day to day, and you don't get that opportunity to collaborate across departments. And so, yes, it was educational for me to go through this process, as I hope it was in this presentation for all of you as well. But I think it gives our team members an opportunity, when we talk about things like this that impact us all, to learn from each other and what each other is doing. With respect to compliance, just in general, I learned a lot, I think, as did our entire team, that the Finance Office has, you know, really put together some thoughtful measures and requirements that all departments moving forward have to comply with when it comes to elevated levels of compliance. And so that wasn't necessarily something that everyone was excited to hear, but many departments are already doing this and evaluating how to do it in a more efficient manner. And so I think that just bringing everyone together gives people an opportunity to understand, hey, where are you seeking out these types of opportunities from? Where are you hearing them from? Whether it's, you know, industry publications, or it's agencies and partners that we're already involved with. That collaboration is sometimes where you hear about these things and get that opportunity to learn from each other the most. So hopefully, that answers your question.
It does. I babbled through most of them, but then get the information that I want. One of the other things, and I think I want to follow up a little bit on what Counselor Nitzer asked about the compliance part of it, but maybe on the front end, I guess I want to come kind of to the same place. Are we missing someone overall to drive the application process? I think we've, today at least, it said to me that we do a good job of, from the finance end on the compliance, but are we sharing the information? Because I can envision that the Health Department is writing a lot of narrative of who we are as a city, the data that's got to be compiled, and maybe having some way of taking all of that information so that each department isn't rewriting that. And I know it has to be specific to each grant, but I think there's some boilerplates that maybe could be part of the process that, and would one overall person or part-time people or some way to kind of pull this all together pay dividends on the amount that we would pay in the cost of staffing?
Right. No, that's a great question. And, you know, we are very fortunate in the Finance Office because we have a team member, and I think she's still in the audience, and hopefully Lynn Keller Forbes doesn't get upset that I point this out. But we were very fortunate to bring on Amber Gibson, who used to work for CCOG and for Lynn, and she's been, I think, able to assist in kind of facilitating some of those discussions from this more centralized position that she has. And so, you know, while each, we definitely recognize that, while each of the departments have very specific, you know, technical-based grants, that there is some of those commonalities, whether it's on the compliance side of things or the application side of things, that we can, you know, hopefully, you know, better utilize our data internally to meet that. And I think honestly, a lot of the departments, from what I found at least in these previous meetings, they have been having some of these discussions over the past several years. And so at a point where we feel as though that's a necessary piece to moving forward, we're definitely going to suggest that and make that recommendation. At this point, we feel pretty comfortable with where we're at, given the expertise that we have and the team members and their skill sets that we have on staff already. But thank you for that.
No, and I think Director Keller Forbes is a little sore yet, but I think we're very honored to have Amber as part of our staff, and I think she's done a great job. I think we're at that time where we need to probably cut short if we need to, or to end this part of the discussion and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to offer any public input.
Hi, Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. I think it's great that we get grants, and I know there's a lot of people who think that we shouldn't take federal money, but guess what? We're all federal taxpayers, and it really is our money, too. I know a few years ago, when we had the ice storm, FEMA gave us $10 million, and there were several counselors that were opposed to it. You know, and I told them at the time, I said, it's our money. We pay federal taxes. It's not like we're taking it from a foreign government. So, and I actually think that, I'm surprised the city doesn't have a whole team of grant writers. I don't know if you're aware, but colleges, a lot of the public universities have whole teams of people who write grants, and I would like to see the city get a lot more money. You know, being the largest city in South Dakota, you would think we'd be getting a lot more federal money in here. For instance, we're going to build this new safety village. I think the price quoted was $30 million. You know, that would be an amazing project for the federal government to kick in, you know, $15 million, half of it, you know, instead of all of us paying the whole chunk of it. And like I said, I think we need to pursue having an actual grant writing team. I think one grant I would like to see the city, or a couple of grants, would be on cleaning up older neighborhoods and ways, better ways to do that. And then another thing I'd like to see is open government, a grant, having, making Sioux Falls a model for the rest of the state on open government and transparency and showing how we can open our books wide open and show the rest of South Dakota that we don't need to be like Pierre, that we can open our books up, and we can show that it's okay to do that. And one of the reasons I say that is because open government saves taxpayers lots and lots of money. It's been proven in federal studies that closed government costs government a lot of money. We had an incident where we claimed we got a $1 million settlement. We didn't get a $1 million settlement. We got our own money back, is basically what we got. It costs the Public Assurance Alliance, which is funded by cities across the state, which is funded by me and other taxpayers. We spent $100,000 to cover up a lie just to show, you know, it proved right there that, you know, if we open up government, we save taxpayers lots of money, and we save a lot of heartache, and we get public trust. So that's another grant I'd like to see. I'm sure there's one out there that exists in some way, shape, or form that can show how we can open our books. We can do it, and as I've always said, there's never been a community in this state that's ever gotten in trouble for opening their books, ever. It's always been quite the opposite. So I think that the city should pursue more grant writing. I think we should try to get as much federal money as we can. It's our money. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ersmann. Is there anyone else that would like to offer any public input? Do I need a motion? Or do I just adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good.